All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock.
On the button.
And we're going to start by opening up to public input. If anyone from the public has any input currently.
Students, do you have any input you would like to tell the adults?
Well, we're gonna move to it. I just wanted to start with that, so. All right, so we are gonna move 7.1, the students' presentations of learning, forward so the students can come up and do their presentations and then go home and hopefully have dinner and bed and stuff.
Thank you. So let's start with Britten and Jonas, and they're gonna have a conversation with Ms. Hager. So this is just highlighting our student-driven assessments. And two of our components of student-driven assessments, many of you know, because you've experienced it as parents, is our celebrations of learning. The other one is our student-led conferences, and that will be led by Luke Bauer, a 4th grader. In years to come, we'll do a 5th grade gateway, which will be where our 5th graders present how and what they learned over their time at Newfields. We, as an SAU, are taking this five-year journey, and people are doing it at different, or schools are doing it at different rates. These ones are where we are, and I'm very excited for you to hear from some of our superstars.
All right. So we're going to have a conversation, just to talk about what we have been studying in class, and we have a celebration coming up next week. So, boys, you wanna introduce yourselves first?
Hi, my name is Britten.
Hi, hello, my name is Jonas.
And we're in 3rd grade.
So what have we been studying about lately?
Native American regions.
Do you wanna tell us anything about them? What do you do? Are you studying things by yourself, or are you working in partners?
Groups.
In groups, all right. And can you tell us, what are the different regions that we're studying?
Great Plains.
The Great Plains.
Southeast.
Southeast.
Southwest. Northwest. Northeast.
Nice job, that's what we're doing. And what ones, so what do we have to do when we're starting a unit of study, and we're going to do a celebration of learning? We're just, first of all, we just wanna learn about it. What are we doing? What did we do? What did we start doing, Jonas?
We read books about our Native Americans.
And what else did we do?
We, um...
We decided to make what?
We decided to make dioramas.
All right, and so in preparation of making a diorama, what do we have to do?
Get materials.
And before the materials?
Write some down.
A lot of work there. Cool.
Very nice.
So after you did that, what did you do? Do you wanna show your diorama?
Jonas, could you share that work with them, so they can see it up close?
This one is Caleb's, and you can just bring it, and Britten, you can bring yours. Jonas couldn't find his. So we have Caleb's. You guys can just bring it, and they can pass it around. If you wanna just give it to them.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, this is like a prelim sketch, I like that.
And then after you got your materials, what did you do?
We collected them. We started our diorama.
You started your dioramas. Can you explain why you have certain things in there? Because it looks like Britten's, yours looks different than Jonas's'.
Because I was studying the southeast.
And you, Jonas, you were studying?
The Great Plains.
All right, can you tell us something a little bit, why, where they are located?
Um, in Florida, and they also hunt alligator.
Wanna go up, Britten, and talk about your, because we have a home in there that looks so different than what we live in right now.
It's called Chicky.
What?
It's hot there.
Is it Chicky? And why is it, why do they live up higher?
So the alligators don't eat...
Pretty smart.
Good call.
These homes are called teepees, and teepees are made out of buffalo skin for the outside and sticks in the inside. And then they tie the buffalo skin to the sticks with a rope, and... Oh, and then if they have a dream, they will design the outside.
Say that last part?
If they have a dream, then they design the outside of the buffalo skin.
Like with the picture of the dream? Wow, that's really cool.
That's cool. I didn't know that. Thank you, Jonas.
Go make a teepee. So what else are we doing? So we made the dioramas, and now what was our next step? What was the next step? What are we doing right now?
We're, we're making posters and, um, taping.
What are we typing, what are we talking about in there? Yeah, all of you.
Clothing. Climate. Climate. Which is rather. Weather. Geography, which is where they are located in the USA. Homes. Homes, food, and animals.
And Jonas, what are you doing in steam class? What are you doing still?
We're making a dance for Kibo, which is a robot. You have to scan it on some blocks to make it move and do what you want it to do. And we're making American, Native American dolls to put onto the Kibo, and then it'll look like the doll is dancing when it moves.
Why would you wanna have a Native American doll dancing? What is it trying to replicate?
Because when they have ceremonies, um, they'll have a dance.
And what kind of a ceremony?
Um, if someone has died. Or, um, in mine, in the southeast, um, they have a green corn ceremony. It's the good harvest.
Anything else you guys wanna talk about?
The poster that we're making?
Sure.
We're making a poster, which we first collect information, and we write it down on a piece of paper, and then we go onto Google Slides and write, typed what we wrote.
Here's your, do you wanna show examples? We have one too. These are two friends of theirs.
Oh, cool. That's like a PowerPoint presentation thing.
Yeah, it's on their Google Slides, and then they're going to come on trifles.
Oh, cool.
Do you wanna show yours? Another friend, you can give it up, bring it up to them, if they wanna see it.
Go ahead, Jonas, they probably wanna see it.
Yeah, sure.
We're not alligators.
Definitely won't bite.
Cool.
You what?
For my, I just need to put my pictures.
You still have to get your pictures.
I have the Chicky.
Because I already, I already did the whole writing.
Want anything else to add? Or do you feel you might ask if you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no question.
Well, if it's the most surprising thing you learned so far?
Probably, um...
Or interesting.
How their houses, um, were built.
It's pretty interesting.
Probably how they drew on the outside of the teepee, pictures of from their dreams.
That is pretty cool.
That is, I like that.
And you guys said your celebration learning's coming up? When is it?
Next Friday.
At what time?
9:30.
9:30? So that way people know when it is. Awesome job, guys.
Thank you.
Luke Bauer, will you tell us about student-led conferences?
Look, I love your haircut, I didn't recognize you at first. That's so cool. Yeah, it's great.
They all do.
So, um, in school, we've been doing lots of information, so we would naturally want to share it with our parents. And here we have information from when we shared it with our parents. So first, I had selected a book that I like, and it's called The Bad Guys. And so we just wrote about it. So its main characters are Mr. Snake, Mr. Shark, Mr. Wolf, um, Mr. Piranha, Agent Fox, and, um, Mr., and yeah, that's all of them. So the setting of my book, um, changes between each book. And the problem in the book is that the bad guys want to be good. The characters are motivated by wanting to be good. And, um, in my books, the characters learn that it feels good to be good. Um, next I have a sample of the writings that we've been doing in our class. So this is, um, a free write that I've been doing, that, um, it's a draft, and we've been working hard on editing and, um, actually take, like, changing general parts of the book, so, um, like, as you can see here, I've, um, cut out complete parts of the book and replaced it with, um, a different piece of paper. So, uh, I'll read the beginning for you. "The pretty clustered lights of Seattle were quite different from the plain landscape of the Sahara Desert, but Peter wasn't paying attention to the amazing city. He was thinking of his daughter, Mika. Once the plane landed, he saw Mr. X, and Peter knew that what would happen next."
Cool.
"In math, we've been doing dare problems, and for a sample of a dare problem here, um, it's, so..." "Janet uses four feet of ribbon to decorate each pillow. The ribbon comes in 225-foot rolls. How many pillows will she be able to decorate with one roll of ribbon? Will there be any ribbon left over?" So first we have my answer statement, which was 56 feet of ribbon with one foot left. For model, I've used, uh, division strategies that we've been learning in class, called an area model. And, um, I also used a tape model and many other forms of a way to display, multiply, division problems. Um, I have another sample dare problem here. "And Kevin spends 35 minutes at each guitar lesson. He has 12 guitar lessons. How many minutes does Kevin spend at his guitar lessons?" So for my answer statement, I put 420 minutes. And as model, I used another way to do an area model for multiplication. I also used a new strategy we've learned in class called partial products, where essentially you, you multiply each number at a time, and you put the answer of each equation that would be the integer number, um, and then add all the answers together. And, um, I got the answer for 420. And, um, we've recently gone on a gondolo trip, and we've experienced what a gondolo would be like. So here I have a gondolo logbook that we've made. So we've learned about plankton and the different kinds of plankton, zoo plankton, phytoplankton, and mero plankton. We also learned how to, um, like, keep our rivers clean and, um, pretty much how to preserve them for years round. Also, and we learned like the impact that we put on the rivers. For example, we could pollute, we often pollute them with trash, like plastic bottles, and yeah. So, um, we also looked, researched maps of, uh, general location, and we learned about the rivers. We've al, and we've also pretty much seen some pretty interesting things on the trip. For example, I saw a old abandoned naval prison called Square Tower. And it was cold, windy, and pretty sunny on our voyage in the gondolo. The temperature was around 60 degrees Fahrenheit, and the wind temperature was 10 miles per hour. And there's a lot of parts of a gondolo, so we learned them and we drew a picture. So yeah, that's my gondolo logbook and all about the trip. It was pretty fun.
Luke, having the gondolo ride, is it smooth? I've never been on it. Is it bumpy, or is it pretty smooth?
Um, well, it's pretty bumpy, um, like, no, since the waves often go, like, pretty, yeah. And, um, but yeah, it's also, in back, um, a long time ago, it was used by sail, but not, but so, since kinda hard to do it, since it was like high tide, we used the, um, the motor and the boat to go a little bit faster.
You didn't row, using the oars? They didn't have the kit?
Oh, yeah, they did have oars and oars and stuff, yeah.
Okay, cool.
So...
Yes, they did.
And in science, we've learned about, um, sound vibrations. So, um, we've been studying that, and here we have an example from a video we saw, which explained like a bunch of cool patterns that sound can make just by itself. And we took notes and, um, connected it to the picture of what happened. And in our Unified Arts projects and PE, we've, I, we showed our parents what we've enjoyed and what we've been doing.
Who's your favorite bad guy?
Oh, that's a hard question.
I love those books. You can say all, it's fine.
All of them, yes. Yeah, all of them.
All of them.
But yeah, that's what we've showed our parents and what we've been doing in class lately, so, yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Nice job.
Yeah, thank you, Jonas, Britten, and Luke for coming and presenting to us. That was pretty awesome. I could not imagine being your age and putting on that kind of performance in front of a group. That's really great.
That's really good.
Thank you so much.
You got it, guys.
Okay, go home and get some sleep, and we'll see you guys in the morning.
She needs to eat.
Yes.
And eat.
And eat. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to go into non-public session, section under RSA 91A 32C. Did you say B? C.
C. You want me to second?
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Right now.
Just non-public?
Yep.
Hi, Jay.
Hi, Steve, how are you?
I'm good, how's it going?
I'm gonna close the door for you guys.
Thank you.
Everybody out.
So I had Jackie, who's 21, made the motion, who seconded it?
Jenny.
Thanks, Jenny.
Chris, do you wanna?
That's all right. You want me to stop? Yes, yes, please.
I'm not afraid.
My god. I'm like, this can't be good. I'm like literally bent over.
Literally, oh man, now, I read all these beforehand, now I'm gonna go blank.
It's okay.
All right. So...
Minutes?
Well, I was gonna say, I know we opened, uh, public input, then we had the presentations, and then non-public, so I figured I'd start there again. Any input before we get moving on with the agenda? All right, looking at minutes, February 9th, I had a couple things.
I had a couple, too.
Under administrative presence, I think it should say Assistant Superintendent, and Suzie Griffith, principal, is not listed.
Oh.
And then page 5, under Principal Report. Did any of us have an actor come to perform? I don't remember that being mentioned.
Sally Ride.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, I couldn't remember.
I couldn't remember her name. I did remember it was an actor.
Cheryl Fay is the actor. She represented Sally Ride.
Oh, gotcha.
I'm sorry?
Is her name Effy Y? Fay?
Yes.
And then, um, in the same section, the 5th grade will be doing Junk to Funk. Wasn't the whole school doing Junk to Funk?
It did.
So should it say the whole school will be doing Junk to Funk? And then the only other thing is, is we have an unidentified person, who I have absolutely no idea who they are.
It was Hobie.
Oh, it was, yeah. That was my change, was Hobie Harmon was the stated, all of his children attended the program, on page 2. And, uh, I just had on page 4, under, um, 629, where's his Ms. Bishop noted NY, it's NYAA, not NYIAA. Keys, um, that's all I had.
I have a couple on that same page, and under 628. Uh, I know Jenny, you recommended changing it, but we didn't, we decided not to change it, correct?
Yeah, we did, we did decide not to change it.
So I don't know if that needs to be in there, or, um, because you're saying recommending changing, and the fact that it...
We didn't.
We didn't change, I feel like should be stated, right?
Should state it, yeah.
So that's what we...
So add a, like, a statement at the end.
Yeah, to say we...
The board decided not to change.
Not to change, should to shall, or something. On page 5, uh, right before Principal Report, Ms. Bishop reported that this will be discussed at the next, just throw in a B. Silly grammar stuff. On page 3, um, 621, JLDBB, the Suicide Prevention. Chris, I don't know, you can say what your intention was, but it said noted that it doesn't apply, but it says should in the event, any of us? I thought maybe it could.
Yeah, meaning like if we have...
Right.
The badges, the phone number would be on the back. So if we ever got student IDs...
If it doesn't, it doesn't currently apply, but it...
But could.
But it would.
Or would, or could, or should, to me implies that you're thinking that it should.
Yeah, maybe it should say would instead of should.
Would would work.
Would, okay. And then the only other thing I would say, and I know minute-taking is not fun, and summarizing things, I just, when I was reading these minutes, I felt like I was in an alternate universe, in that, for the first part with the dare, because that really wasn't, like, I wrote what I, the framing of why I sort of brought that up, and really, and I actually watched a video again, because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't misremembering. But basically, my whole intention, and what I feel like I was saying, was that if it hadn't yet already started this week, I was planning on asking if we can consider moving it to after school, and then that was really it. I didn't actually, um, the second sentence, I don't think I said it at all, actually. Somebody else, I think, did, that, that I felt there was concerns taking time away from academics and working hard to catch up after COVID. I don't think I actually even said that. So I don't know if we want to literally remove words from, but just reading that paragraph, it, I came across, and I then reflected, what's the whole purpose of minutes anyway? But it's real, because you're not capturing everything, right? It's sort of the flavor of what the conversation was about.
Yeah, I mean...
And that paragraph, to me, did not seem to feel like what I was...
So it's kind of the will of each board, how you want it done. What you only need is, you need motions in your minutes. So you can put, "Discussion ensued about Dare Program." You don't need to capture the back and forth. So it's the will of the board, and some boards like to see more, some boards like to see less, so it is your, your minutes of the meeting. And again, we do have the recorded documents now, so that always goes up, so there is a, people can review that as well.
So I don't think we need to totally summarize the whole conversation. We can if we want to, but I was gonna suggest maybe saying something like, Mr. Kelly indicated the Dare Program was supposed to start in the January, and it began this week. And then he stated if it hadn't yet already started, he was going to ask if we could possibly shift it after school, and then just leave it at that.
But the, the whole section, or just that one paragraph?
Just that one paragraph.
I'm fine with that, because that's exactly...
Do you know what I mean? It just felt a little uncomfortable.
I remember there was some talk about the 30 minutes versus 45 and stuff.
Yeah, we can clip it if you want, but...
But, I mean, it's, it's all in the recording. I'm not, I'm not too worried about it.
And then most of the other stuff, I just want to be clear, you are fabulous. I, some of these other things were said, but it was actually, you know, a half hour later, after people were talking about conversations, and so, um, that would be my only, my only request, if we can consider doing that. I think it better captures at least that part of the meeting.
Yeah. So just to clarify, you wanna take everything else out, or just, we're talking?
Just the first paragraph.
Just the first paragraph, yeah.
So, and so instead of that first paragraph, you, we wanna do, just say, "Mr. Kelly indicated that the Dare Program was supposed to start in January and began this week. He expressed that if it hadn't started this week, he was gonna say..."
I was gonna consider requesting, yeah, and then...
And then just leave that first, and the rest of that first paragraph.
And then Ms. Bishop noted, because then...
Then Ms. Bishop went on a rant. Sorry.
Which was fine, you know, it was, it was a good conversation, but I just wanted to...
No. No, I, I think that's fine.
Thank you.
I'm fine with that. That, that makes sense, it's totally fine. On that note, though, is there a way for us to get the links with the minutes? There's still like no easy way.
So they are, administrative assistants have been asked, and they're starting to upload them and put the, the link right there as soon as the meeting's over. So hopefully tomorrow or Friday...
Okay.
The link of this meeting will be up, because Nancy has, has to have time to go and draft these up, write them, and then get it, then we put them up. We have 48 hours to do that, and she works diligently, but the link is gonna go up.
Yeah, I was more like the video, like for people who can't...
That request has been heard, and that should happen tomorrow, Friday, at the latest, so that will go.
Do you know what I had been doing? I don't, I don't know if, I had been going just to the YouTube.
Oh, yeah, I do too, but not everybody knows that's how you get there, so it's just, but people know it's recorded, and then they're like, I don't know where to find it now. Where did I go?
On the tech thing, I was actually thinking about this. Is there a way, maybe one meeting, having somebody go through where to find things? Because even the website is, you can't find anything, and I think just knowing how to get to things might be a beneficial thing. I don't know if that's possible.
I'm bringing half in the communications meeting.
Yes, that was a communications.
On March 22nd. It's on my list.
I will make a motion to pass the minutes as amended.
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Manifest some financials.
He gets, uh, you signed the manifesto. In your board pack, it does have a current year financial, so we did have some significant expenses added since last month, but I did put on here what it's for, did anybody have any questions on any of the individual items?
I...
We have the same thing.
We literally are circling the same thing, so, the OT contracted services, is that one of them that, it's a really big number?
Suzie, talk to that a little bit if you want.
Is it something we weren't anticipating, is...
In the past, there's been a grant that has covered that.
Okay.
And the grant is used up, and so now we're paying that cost.
So on that note, then, for next year, do we have enough, is that, is this increased?
That's being something that, that we're spending time with, making sure that we're utilizing the service correctly.
Okay. And then the support services, that 17,000? What is G, what's GMR?
If you remember when we did the budget, we had the GMR for next year, 2.6%.
Yeah.
It's guaranteed maximum rate.
Right.
So, the way the health insurance works for teachers is, it starts in September, and it goes through August. So that, the last paycheck, which most people don't know that. That, when we pay for the health insurance for July and August, that's in the new rate, because the rate goes up July 1st, and so, but the teacher's health insurance runs September to August, so you have to account for the increase in the rate.
Okay. And then the food service loss projection, holy bananas.
Yeah, so I, I found out the food service loss projection, because it is trending.
Okay. So I went through, then, the line items, where we were, basically where we're negative. I guess... I mean, where are we, are we gonna end up short in places we need, are we moving, because there's a lot of negative in here, and then there's a lot of, like, overage.
So we really manage to the bottom line number, we do try to stay within that, but really, what you have to manage to is your bottom. And with that, you'll see the expenses less than plan, and the revenue more than plan, which then contributes to the unbalanced, you see, that overage.
Yeah, so I understand that, my concern is, is we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, so when you're talking about line items, so is there anything that we should be concerned of, that we're not... We're not spending where we had said we were gonna spend, but we're spending in other areas, like, are there any red flags that we need to be aware of, that are coming down the line?
Yeah, I think one thing that's super important is for us to stay true to the line item.
Yeah.
So that we actually have a real, a real budget to look back on.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, in doing that, we've stayed careful to make sure that that bottom line stays within the black. And, and this budget that I turned into you for this upcoming year, those things were noted quite clearly.
Because like improvement in instruction service is negative 7,000, okay.
It's okay, I also add to that Jenny?
Yeah, you can, actually.
So when this budget gets passed, right, in March, hopefully Tuesday?
Yeah.
If it changes, so students come in that we need to budget for...
Right.
That's what you're gonna see here, or people take more classes, so that instructional piece, by their contract, they're allowed to, so we budget, thinking, three teachers are gonna take classes, however, it's a big year, and eight people take classes.
Okay.
That's why that site-based, or zero-based budget that Molly's talking about, it equates itself, because you see, like, transportation is lower.
Right.
The other thing you'll see in transportation is that with our students going to after-school care, because we don't have a program here, the board last year made the decision that we'll pay for the busing this year.
Yep.
That's not something that we would put in for this next, next round going forward, so, because we felt that it was a year to figure out that process and help out and support families, so that's the other thing, when you look at it, that was nothing that was ever budgeted for, but it was approved by, so
Yeah.
Those are some of the factors when you do a budget in March.
Oh yeah.
Just pay for the next, that...
No, that's fine.
A budget in March, a budget in October.
Right, it's October for March to vote on, and then, yeah, no, I totally get that, I just wanted to make sure that the, we're not, you guys aren't, and I know you're not, but you know what I mean, like...
It's a good question.
Are we, are we in danger of not providing services that we need to, because we're short for certain things, so we're good, okay. All right.
Jackie, you have questions, or can I?
You can go.
The one question I had was, well, the first one was about the OT, although it says Exeter Peds, is that?
They're contracted out, yeah.
But not Peds, it's, is it occupational therapy of Exeter Hospital, right? Okay, just one of them. And then, the revenue different than planned, so I saw the food services management additional expense, but then below that, curiously, it's, we had all those, so what does that mean?
This is an interesting animal. So you have your two funds, you have your general fund and your food service fund, and at the end of the day, the food service fund can't be negative, and so what happens is, if it's in a loss position, so it's not that you're spending more than plan, but food service has revenue in three sections, it's the, well, actually, for you, it's only fun, because you guys aren't in the federal program, so it's what parents pay in minus the expense that goes out. So, even if the food service fund is not over-expending the budget, if your revenue is less than the expenditures, that puts the food service fund in a loss position. And what has to happen is, the general fund has to cover that loss. So, Newfield is a very small school. All of the small, all of the schools in SAU 16 lose, except for the cooperative, and it's because Jesus Day working and stuff like that. So, because you have fixed salaries, the food cost is astronomical. Not as many children are eating, well, you guys never had the free feed like other schools had, but we're seeing that in other districts. It's expected there would be a loss, because if you were to set a price that we were giving, you'd probably price yourself out.
So I understand that, but I guess I'm just trying to understand what that, so was that $18,000 money that you took from another fund to sort, to balance out the lines, or what is that?
So the way, so the way your taxes are set is, in the springtime, we vote on a budget, and then in the fall, I project the revenue. And we try to be conservative in the revenue, so I always know what's coming. So, we were very conservative on the food service revenue, so you are seeing more revenue than we originally planned in the fall to set your tax rate, but you're seeing more expense.
Okay.
And so that's the loss.
Thank you, okay. And then my final question is, just knowing that we had some bumps getting the, for a while, I was like, oh, lunches are free, clearly that's not true, you know, but how is this happening? Is there, does this number factor in all the to-be-paid? So, that number could get better, I guess, is my point.
Yeah, so with the food service, we project based off of actuals and encircuses.
Okay, that's...
What we say is, we see 40% of the school eating every day, so we'll, we know what revenue we have to date. So we guess how much we have till the end of the year.
Okay.
And then we say, okay, we spent this much on food, we're a little bit more than halfway through, project the expenses. So it is based off of a projection to the end of the year, what we have a loss, so it could get worse, it could get better.
Good.
She took out Taco Tuesday, so we're, it's gonna get better.
If, if something happens, then...
There's one Taco Tuesday, I know, my kids are like, darn it, they love that!
So we work on, based on our history, to the best that we can, so if all of a sudden, something happens, so all the food prices go sky-high, yes, you'll have a bigger loss, but...
Everybody's eating cereal.
No, but that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Molly.
Thank you Molly.
Thanks Molly.
All right, committee reports, policies.
Oh man, I'm telling you, you guys signed up the newbie for...
All right.
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot!
All right, first up, ACE.
I wrote okay.
Me too. You Bobby?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next, policy IHBA, programs for students with disabilities, there's one thing that I do want to kind of change. It's in the last paragraph. It's a sentence that starts 22nd birthday, or until such time as he slash she, can we change it to the student?
I'm fine with the student, that, just having been at that meeting, the part that was changed, I think the only part that was changed was the 22, because that was a new law, but yeah, the he/she, I'm fine with.
Yeah.
To the student.
I was fine with that change, I was just trying to make it inclusive.
Good.
The student, that's what you'd like?
Yeah.
Got it, thanks.
I did have a question about this, actually, programs for students with disabilities. When we're talking about out-of-district placements or anything, is there a policy that goes along with this about that?
My apologies.
No, you're fine. I was like, ooh, that's pretty good. I didn't see anything, I, I mean, we have a bunch of special ed's policies here, is there a policy about out-of-district placement specifically, just with special ed? No?
Not that I've ever known of.
Oh, okay.
It is ruled by both state and federal regulations in terms of individuals with disabilities, Education Act, IDDA, at the federal level, and then New Hampshire adopts their standards for students with disabilities. So, the protocols within both of those regulations are what we use to determine whether or not a student needs to come out of district.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that didn't, something referenced here, that there was something separate, okay.
That's a good question.
Yeah, yeah, I knew where I was going with that.
I did make...
Are you good with that one?
Yeah.
Yes, I just, since it was here, I wanted to ask the question about, is there one, and then maybe, should there be one?
Jenny, I did make the request that if there's ever a referred-to policy for it to be included, and it was heard that in clear.
Well, and I figured that, I just, that there wasn't one, I guess I was more asking, should there be one?
Yeah, that's fair.
All right, IHBAA, evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities, I have one thing. It's the last paragraph, if, should have a lowercase i, not a capitalized I.
Oh, yep, I'm like, what?
That's the only thing I saw.
It's because it's like super faint. I didn't, I didn't see anything.
No, I'm good.
Are we good?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, JLCK, special physical health needs of students.
Wait, what?
Are we skipping the B A B?
Oh, hi! I'm like, you just skipped the really long one!
I checked the wrong one.
Intentionally, yeah.
She skipped right over the really long one.
It's because it's the same lettering, I H B A B, sorry.
I wrote a little cheat sheet, this merged a couple of things.
Yeah, I noticed that, because I started writing notes, and then I was, oh wait, that's down here now, and that's... I do have a question on this one, so, where it says that school district in SAU 16 may deny a request for independent education evaluation at public expense, and initiate a due-process hearing to demonstrate that the district's evaluation was appropriate. When, I guess, what are the circumstances where we would, we, we wouldn't deny it? Or is there, if, if an evaluation isn't done in the timeframe? So isn't there a time that an evaluation has to be done by the ti, in a certain timeframe?
Yeah.
So if it's not done, is that when somebody could go outside and get an evaluation, an independent evaluation, or... Because it says they can deny their request, but what, where, what would be the circumstances where we would, we would pay for it, I guess?
So I can give a stab, and then Ellen back up, but oftentimes, the reason we deny requests, because in your IEP meetings, we would recommend that we do a certain testing, and the parent may say, I don't want that person doing it, I want my own person doing that.
Okay.
It would be an extra burden or a financial obligation that we could already cover within our building, and with our staff, so it's not just a pick and choose. However, if there's certain contradictions, or we felt the report was not accurate, we may ask for a private, you know, person to do that, working with the family. So that's been my experience, if there's anything to add on to that, or have you seen it differently?
I think if, sometimes we have granted requests for an independent evaluation, I think that is a good answer, and also, sometimes we have granted requests for independent evaluations due to some extenuating circumstances, sometimes there is a, you know, a significant crisis, student is, and time is of the essence, so perhaps we would not be able to complete an evaluation in the, within the timeframe that would be required.
That's kind of what I was thinking, honestly.
One example of extenuating circumstances.
Student wasn't in our district at the time, that was where they might be, it might, if there was a Newfield student, then they were Boston, because of a crisis, we may need a special person for them.
Yep, okay.
So the language is, is fine, you were just asking about the situations.
Yeah, I have another suggestion for the language.
Okay, let's hear it.
Last paragraph, it says, "A parent always has a right to get an independent value, education value at his or her own expense." Can we change it to, "A parent always has the right to pay for an independent educational evaluation?" That way we get rid of the his/her?
The only, if we do that, we should probably, we want to be clear that they're not entitled to a reimbursement.
That was my, that was the point of clarification, I was going to say, is that the part where it says his or her own expense, I think is clear that there is no reimbursement happening.
You can say at their own expense.
Okay.
At their own expense.
That works.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
That was what I originally had. I was...
But you were trying to be more efficient with language, I appreciate.
I was, I was trying.
No, I think the language is, is pretty clear, I just wanted a clarifying.
All right, so we're good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, JLCK, special physical health needs of students, I was okay with that.
This was a new requirement, and we used a sample from the School Board Association, which was, I thought was interesting.
Oh yes, that's where they all start.
It's a template.
Most of the time, yeah.
All right. Do you have anything?
Nope.
All right.
Look at that, that's because the hard ones are coming.
EHAA, computer security email and internet connection.
Okay, I had a question. And number three, it says, "The email system shall not be used for commercial ventures, religious, or political causes outside organizations, or other non-job-related solicitations." So my question would be, is NYAA comes to Suzie slash Jane and says, hey, we have something we'd like emailed out, does that fall under that?
No, because it's...
It's not a commercial venture, it's not a...
But it's an outside organization.
But it's not a solicitation, well, what's the definition of solicitation, right?
I guess that's my, I was looking at, I was looking at gray area, because it used to be, like, if we, if we had, any flyers that are made have that language that says, "We're not affiliated with the district," and any outside person, I'm just speaking from my own...
There's a policy for flyers, though, that it gets approved by the superintendent, and then can be dispersed.
Yes, but, that's my question, does this contradict that, is my, or do we have maybe more clarifying?
My request would be, if you want any clarification, to find out what solicitation means, because typically, I'd be asking for money, I think that would be something that we can clearly say, it's probably not okay. Oh, are you?
If you're registering for, like, Exeter softball just sent out a flyer, or...
And I'm also thinking Cub Scouts.
Cub Scout sends out a flyer, or...
Food and stuff, that's technically solicitation.
Just not like, I mean, it's, it's a non, it's not like, this would...
Yeah, it's a good question, because there's another policy that we tabled that's similar.
Because I understand what it's getting at, but I'm also thinking of how we really use it, and, or even any fundraising, like, PTO even, they're not a, a school affiliate, I mean, they're not part of the school. They're not a, a school, a Philly, I mean, they're not part of the school.
Although, why aren't we sending out a lot of those things now through, oh, sorry, I'm sliding towards you, through Alma, right through that, cuz that's not, that's not a SAU sixteen email, is it?
Yeah, Alma's attached to it.
It's attached to the email, yeah.
Sorry. I was trying to find us a, a way forward.
So I guess, maybe, maybe we table it and ask those clarifying questions, can we?
We can ask that one.
You know what I mean?
For that outside organization, who is that?
Who, what does that mean, because?
Or clarify that.
Cuz there are organizations that we do send flyers to.
And we, we should.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Um, on that note, though, I do have one gramat- grammar thing. Um, it's on the, oh, never mind, that's a different policy. I thought it was, no, it's on this one.
Dang it!
I was trying.
Okay, so, table that one.
Yeah, I think it's just, we need some clarifying.
Organization.
And what's, I mean, and not just, but like, what is it, what is this?
Cuz you can even mention, like, NYA with signups, Cub Scouts with bringing in food items and stuff like that, cuz we've done that through the school.
Yep.
Alright, so that one's tabled.
Other than that, I thought it was fantastic.
You liked getting rid of electronic mail?
Yes. I was like, oh my goodness.
GBEF, school district internet access for staff, this has my grammatical thing. Third paragraph of, internet should be lowercase.
Um, the font is changing, to be consistent, I did ask that. Cuz it's a different font. And there was some discussion about, um, that people were concerned that, you know, there's no way to really prevent it, but what we, the policy could be that we're at least putting a measure in place to help stop prevent. Um, so that, that was some of the back and forth language discussion.
And then there's the student one, which is basically the-
Are you done?
Similarly.
Are you good with that one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright. JICL, school district internet access for students, so I actually do have a question. Um, cuz in here it says, faci- cuz it's very similar to the staff, um, one. It says facilitating communications with parents and guardians. As someone that's had a student who's at the high school, he's tried emailing us, like, papers to print at home, can't send them to us. We've tried forwarding things to him, it doesn't go through. So if that's the case, that they're supposed to be able to communicate with parents, the settings on the accounts, the last, granted, it's been probably like, a year and a half or so before, since that's happened, but, um, it was not allowing us at that time to communicate back and forth via email. So I don't, I don't know if that was supposed to-
I believe it's the settings for the school, because our middle school and high school students can communicate.
Okay.
So I'll ask that question, I mean, this is written properly, that I can do that, but it's a setting, it's a question about our settings.
It's just one of those things that I'd be just curious.
Yeah.
I know, because I have an SAU sixteen email, Philip has shared things with me. He gets very excited when he does, um, but it was with my older student that, um, we had that issue, cuz he had to have something printed, and he couldn't print, for whatever reason, from his device, so. That was the only question I had, everything looked fine otherwise.
Yeah, it looked fine to me.
I'm good.
Alright, um, BEDG minutes.
I wrote legal. That was my notes from the, from the meeting. There was a lot of lawyers on that.
Well, yeah, cuz didn't we bounce it back to them?
No, this was-
No, this was not one of them.
This was the one that didn't, um-
We didn't get this one.
That, this is the one you wanted to see.
Yeah.
Oh, right, that goes with-
Correct, the one that we tabled.
Ah, yes.
The non-public, which, and I complained, I'm like, can we do them together in the future?
I know, right?
Um, the paragraph right before B, the and/or, I think there should be a slash. And/or superintendents.
Mm-hmm.
That was the only thing that caught my eye, cuz it read very much, oh wait, never mind, I do have another one, I lie.
Liar, liar, pant on, huh?
Yep, C two, the second paragraph, website, I believe is one word, and it's there twice separated.
Where are you?
Right? Am I not looking at the right one again?
Yep, yeah, they're either on the, on the second page of the-
Is it again, this one?
Number two.
Oh, I-
Yeah, number, next page. I know it's weird, cuz it's-
Got it.
It doesn't matter.
Wait, I'll look at this one then.
I don't know.
Which one?
BEDG.
Was this the original?
That might be.
Maybe.
Yeah, I don't have that one, that's weird.
Yeah, I don't have that one either.
Cuz they sent us a second one, that's my, that was my, wasn't there one that got sent again?
Yeah, it was sent again in reference to the, to back up the other one. But they've obviously made changes to it. Um, ooh.
Lawyer, so what did they say, anything?
It was like, all of this complies with ours.
I do actually have another question, Bobby.
Yeah.
Under four, in the A through H, there's a lot of, like, stars all over the place, any idea why?
Oh, sealed minutes list, um, no.
It all goes down to here.
It's like, all throughout.
It's all legal reference to here.
Is it?
Yep.
Is that what it's been to?
The very bottom, yep.
Oh, I didn't realize the stars did that. Okay, that wasn't clear to me.
I assume that, maybe I'm assuming something.
I don't know if it does, cuz all the other ones have stuff at the bottom too, and they don't have asterisks.
You see the other time.
And there's two around time, under B.
I don't know.
Do you have any idea why there would be asterisks?
It's not at that meeting, so I do not know.
I feel like this is one I need to, like, read like, a thousand times.
Can we table this one, and can, Bobby, when you meet again, can you ask about the stars in this one?
Yeah, so I'm happy to, I'm still trying to understand how the, the, this meeting works, because I think we have a full docket of like, ten more to review this next meeting every time. So, well, I'm happy to, but I don't know that they're gonna have that policy ready for me to ask. So, like, Chris, when you say, if we come up with something and you're like, at this, this meeting, you say, oh, I'll ask about that, who do you ask?
Heather.
Heather.
Who is the policy part, could you ask her that question? Like, when you do it, as opposed to me sprinkling the question?
At the meeting.
Only because-
I can do it like we did last time, we tabled two, we back and set here.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's, it's probably more-
I'm totally happy to, I mean, I asked, for example, about accompanying the, the other documents, just to reinforce that, but, yeah. Only because there's gonna be eight more.
Alright. BE, BEC, non-public sessions, we tabled it from last month.
Mostly because I believe you wanted to see BEDG, correct?
Because it references.
Right. And so, I'm fine with it as it is, having, looked at BEDG.
I'm also okay with it.
Yeah, I was, I was, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the heck it was referencing, I was like, whoa.
ECA?
But we had changes, right, didn't we have changes to this one from BEC?
No, you just wanted to have the reference BEDG with it, you, you, your comment was, you couldn't prove it till you saw that piece, I believe.
Cuz I wrote, I wrote votes in publ- where did I write that? I'm gonna have to revise this, cuz non-public shall remain confidential, except the extent that the same is required to be disclosed, subject to applicable law in court and authorized by the board. Does this reference as having to come out of non-public, and any vote needs to be done in, in public?
Unless it has to remain confidential.
The board shall recommend some of that. Require content available regarding minutes of non-public. So I guess, it's the, except to the extent, the same is required to be disclosed, subject to applicable law, that would be, is if, it is something we have to vote on, and I'm assuming the applicable law would be if we have to vote on it in public, okay. So we don't need the-
Nope.
Okay.
Alright.
Did you all get that, that was a little mumble.
ECA, building and ground security, which was tabled, did we find out about, like, the small school?
Yeah, so we had talked about that second bullet from the bottom, and, um, another school, um, had the same concern, because they don't staff at all night, so they removed that.
Just the whole bullet, yeah.
So I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, that's the simplest way to do it. You can thank them for their, uh, originality.
You, you set it up.
It was a layup.
It's a great thing about multiple districts. That was a concern, you have, oh, great one, you know, they made the decision right there.
That's great.
I was like, oh. Are we good with that one otherwise?
Yep.
Alright, so, since I did my little check marks again.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you check them right?
Yes, I did. Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion that we pass policies ACE, IHBA, IHBAA, IHBAB, JLCK, GBEF, JICL, BEC, ECA.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
And we're tabling BEDG, yeah.
Um, BEDG and EHA were tabled.
Yeah, got, okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, superintendent evaluation committee, um, I gave you guys the goals that were finalized and submitted, that way you will have them. So that way, as we continue through the school year, you know kind of what the goals of the superintendent are. Okay. Okay.
Um, the communications and commu- community engagement committee is meeting on March twenty-second. Yay! That's all I got.
Do you feel engaged?
Very engaged.
I just noticed secu- security and security is on here.
Um, we're not meeting until April.
Oh, so that's probably why, okay. Alright, principal report.
Well, we had the students do a fabulous job of letting you understand more about, um, our student, uh, assessments. The celebrations of learning and when students are involved in those units of study really do allow them to dig deep into their work today in fourth grade. They're, they're working on New Hampshire settlements, and they're having to say, um, what they would need on the ship coming over, and then where they would reside in New Hampshire. And they were so engrossed in it, that one student said, I don't wanna go out to recess, can I keep working? And then, other students in the class said the same thing, and most of the students stayed in today, just to keep working, cuz they were so engaged. Even though the classroom teacher was like, go outside. It just goes to prove how involved they are in this type of learning, and, um, and I appreciate the teachers, um, really, from the get-go, embracing this idea of allowing the students to take front and center with our celebrations of learning and our, their units of study. Um, tomorrow is a big day here, we have a, the Sky Dome coming, uh, for first grade and for fifth grade, but they're sharing it with the whole school. First and fifth are doing units on astronomy, um, that will actually be what, um, first grade celebrations of learning is about. Uh, it's a thirteen by nineteen foot dome that will come into the multipurpose room, and the students lay down on their backs and look up at the night sky, and the presenter, um, talks to them about what they're seeing. So, um, this is an excellent example of bringing a field trip into the school, so that we're actually able to allow all of the students to experience something like this. I know, I've never experienced it, I'm excited to put a towel down and, um, see the sky. Fifth grade is working on their celebration of learning on the Wax Museum, and our new, um, student research platform, which is Pebble Go, is really allowing students to access, um, grade level material, um, not only by eye reading, but ear reading. It's, it's, um, really allows accessibility to all of our students on all of our grade levels. Like I said, fourth grade is doing their, um, a unit of study right now in New Hampshire settlements. Third graders, like you saw tonight, are doing Native Americans, they're also doing, in the background, they're doing a bigger project, I think I've mentioned it before, about, uh, building bridges around the world. Uh, right now, they are sharing experiences with, um, um, a classroom in Australia. Um, I think after that, they do one from South Africa. Tomorrow is one of my favorite days, it's pizza with the principal, where we have all of our students that celebrate March birthdays, along with Charlie Anne's part of that. Mr. Promley's part of that, I think Ms. Johnson's part of that. It really allows us to come as a cross-section of adults and students and celebrate. Second grade is doing their celebration of, um, learning on heroes, and is very involved in that. Um, we also have our Northeast Passage coming, um, next week, which is allow, it, it just allows students to be able to be exposed to individuals, um, with disabilities, um, in recreation, and so they have the experience to be in wheelchairs, um, and talk about Para Olympics, and how you can still be, um, active, uh, no matter what your plight is, and, um, last year it was a huge success. And so, Ms. Chow, our P E teacher, brought it back.
Susan, do you know when the Mac, the Wax Museum is, or was that, um, sort of decided by the, by the-
She has not put that on the schedule yet.
Okay, but is that gonna be?
It just got started.
No, I know.
Yeah.
But is that gonna be more like the, how it was in the past, although I never had a fifth grader, um, where we come in and see it? Okay, cuz I know we've, we've adapted over the last couple of years, so, cool, thank you. Also, thank you for clarifying that the spa- the planetarium is first, and fifth grade is, cuz as you can imagine, I have a first and a fifth grader in our house, so they're each claiming that it's their thing. So it's both, which is nice.
I'd expect the child to like, request a pillow to be put in her backpack.
Yeah, right.
I have sneaking suspicion that might be it.
That's awesome, so the Pebble Go is up and running, like, the thing that we-
It is.
Do they have access to Pebble Go at home?
They do.
They do, okay, is it right in just their Google Classroom, just like everything, okay.
That's great.
That's awesome.
They have the password to it.
I was gonna, it's in Clubber, right?
Cool, thank you.
Alright, any new business?
No.
Any old business? Alright, then our next meeting is April fifth.
No, I was just-
Six o'clock.
I'm sorry, Jackie, I don't have any old business, but I did wanna ask, if I did have something, I could just typically bring it up now, even off agenda?
No.
I'm not going to.
I'm just kidding. I might slap it, I'm just kidding.
Cuz like, uh, like, what are the parameters?
We try to have everything on the agenda, but if something comes up, since the agenda's put out a week in advance.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, alright, then I will make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.